Good evening and thank you for joining us. I am Kevin Hagerty, President of the League of Women Voters of Marin County. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, nonpartisan, membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We promote voter education and advocate for issues, but never endorse or oppose candidates from political parties. During the election year, it is our mission to educate voters about candidates and ballot issues so that they can make an informed choices when they mark their ballots. Moderating candidate forums is an important part of this work. And now I am pleased to hand over the reins to this evening's moderator, League Member Sue Ream.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Ream and I will be your moderator tonight. Thank you for joining us for this candidate forum. And thank you to community members who submitted questions. We have tried to include as many of them as we can as our time allowed. The Board of Supervisors of Marin County is our governing body and passes all our county ordinances, sets priorities for our county funds, services, and property based on their understanding of residents' needs. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates for Board of Supervisors, District Four. With me this evening behind the scenes are Elaine Bia Genie, who is our timekeeper, and Dedee Butori, who is providing the Zoom support, along with Annabelle Gueray and Karina Inguez, who are providing our Spanish language interpretation. A reminder, all of our candidates have agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. This evening's forum is simulcast on Marin TV Channel 30, facilitated through our partnership with the Community Media Center of Marin. It's being recorded and will be available through our website at MarinLWV.org. It will be rebroadcast on Marin TV Channel 30, and the days and times will be posted later on our website. Our candidates will be allowed specific times for their opening and closing remarks to respond to questions. The two candidates running for the Board of Supervisors, District Four seat, are Frank Drillard and Dennis Redoni. The candidates are going to be invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, they will each have 90 seconds to answer each question. And to be fair, I will rotate the order. So for the opening statements, we will begin with Frank.
Hello, my name is Frank Drillard and I'm running for Board of Supervisors, District Four. As you said, I was born and raised in a small agricultural community in Michigan and obtained my BSCE from the University of Michigan in 1983. Then I moved out to San Francisco to begin working for a bridge design firm. 10 years later, I joined another firm in San Francisco where I was a principal engineer, and we've designed bridges around the world. In 1993, I got married and we moved to Novato, California. I lived in Sausalito for about 10 years before that. And I've been in Novato since 1993. Started getting interested in politics after the 2020 election. Ended up forming what's known as the Marin Election Integrity Committee. We advocate for election, free and fair elections in Marin County. We observe elections and we analyze results. I've also served as the Chair of the Novato Police Advisory and Review Board. And I was, for a while, a member of the Marin County Central Committee. And I'm running for a seat again on the Central Committee, as well as the Board of Supervisors. I love Marin County. I've been, you know, I think it's one of the most beautiful places to live. I fear that it's, the quality of life is starting to deteriorate. And especially, you know, it's hard for young people to live here. It's hard for older people to retire here. I see rampant homelessness, which is really a drug abuse problem, in my view. And I'd like to correct that. And so the, I'm interested in enforcing the law. I'm against Prop 47. I support the effort to repeal Prop 47 because I think it's going to eventually impact Marin like it is San Francisco and the East Bay. And so I want to help Marin overcome some of these major issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Dennis?
Yeah, thanks to the League of Women Voters for holding this forum. And thank you also for the Spanish translation. You may or may not know that 23% of my district, District Four, speaks Spanish at home. So it's really important to have this translation. My name is Dennis Redoni and I've been District Four Supervisor for seven years. And I'm currently President of the Board of Supervisors. I was born at Centerfell General, grew up in Point Ray Station, attending West Marin Elementary and Tamalas High School. I received a degree in economics and a secondary teaching credential from Chico State, which is now UC Chico. I taught high school for three and a half years before transitioning to a project management job for a general contractor in San Rafael. And in 1982, I became a general contractor and ran my own business for 35 years, mostly doing remodels and renovations in West Marin. I was on the North Marin Water Board for over 20 years, starting in 1995, representing Novato and West Marin. And I served on Lafco, the Local Agency Formation Commission, for over 20 years as a special district member and a Board of Supervisor representative. Lafco is a state agency that's responsible for orderly government. I am married, living in Lima with my wife Judy. Have two adult daughters, two grandchildren, and one great-granddog. And I'm really, really proud to represent District Four on the Marin County Board of Supervisors. My early endorsements over six months ago included the Sierra Club, North Bay Labor Council, Professional Firefighters 1775, and the Northern California Planned Paranoid Action Fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, now we're going to begin the Q and A section. And I'm going to read the questions. And if you need me to repeat them, please do. So Dennis, we're going to start with you. And question number one. As a result of California's new state mandated housing element, Marin County and all its municipalities are obligated to build more than 14,000 new housing units by 2031. Housing was the number one issue in the most recent community survey. Our towns and cities are struggling to develop and implement updated housing elements to comply with the state mandate. What steps would you recommend to accommodate this housing need?
So thank you very much for the question. Marin County has a certified housing element. We were able to meet the state, early state deadlines, and we were certified by the state. It was a lot of work to identify potentially 3,600 units on sites throughout unincorporated Marin. We were able to do that. We're in the process now of putting in place the implementation and programs to help develop that housing. But at the end of the day, government doesn't build housing. It's the landowners, developers, and property owners that build housing. So we have to make sure with our policies and programs that we're able to meet state guidelines by providing an easy path forward to build housing, especially workforce housing, most important, workforce and affordable housing in Marin County. You know, I think most of the cities have also had gotten a certified element at this point or are very close to getting that. It will be difficult to meet that $14,000, $14,000 unit mandate. We'll continue to work on that, though. And I think in Marin, we've ended up with a good plan where a lot of the density is on the 101 corridor, where we have good transportation and good services. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes, the way I would address the issue, for one, I think the regional housing needs assessments are excessive. They're based on the population growth that is unrealistic. I think the numbers are too high. The 14,000 by 2030 is ridiculous. We've, the housing, sales have stalled in this county. The state, they're down 15%. The, and the skew of the housing is toward high-end housing and not low-income housing. I think that we need to challenge those numbers. We need to oppose the big-box housing projects that are being imposed on these small communities and cities in Marin County. We need to reinforce local planning so people have a voice in what gets built in their communities. And like I said, I'm opposed to the big-box housing development. I see what they're proposing in Novato in my city, and it's just absurd. It's going to ruin the downtown areas and the neighborhoods of those downtown areas. And so I think we need to reconsider and build the housing that Marinites want and need. And it's mostly, you know, low-income housing, single-family housing. So my approach would be to challenge the numbers and then challenge Sacramento's central control over local control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Dennis, you're up for question number two. What is your position on rent control in the unincorporated areas of Marin? And you're muted.
Thank you. So I'm very much in favor of tenant rights, making sure that tenants are protected, primarily because so many of our residents are very vulnerable to being on the street should they miss a paycheck or they have a huge rent increase. And that would mean that the county would become responsible at that point through our health and human service system. So I think it's in the county's interest to make sure that there are tenant rights in place. You know, often we talk about rent control is the main, the main part of tenant rights. But there's a bunch of other tenant rights that are important, including proper evictions, making sure people have, are notified of when they're, they have to vacate in ample time so they can find other units, making sure if they're displaced that there are programs in place that they can be, find other units that are available. And then also that if they're displaced for, not for just cause, they're able to be reimbursed for some of their rental costs for finding a new place. So those are all important protections, you know, related to rental control, rent control. I think that's the biggest challenge. I do believe the state has a good system in place, but maybe 10% is too high. Landlords are usually pretty happy with 3% to 5%. So I think I would look to the landlords and see what they need and try and find a common ground if we were to do a rent control in Marin.
Thank you. Frank? And you're muted.
Landlords already have a significant burden in the state, and I oppose any additional rent control measures. It's eventually going to lead to fewer housing units available and less quality. We see that everywhere around the nation. I do support having some tenant rights. I mean, you can't just kick people out without due process. I'm opposed to that. But I'm also opposed to limiting people, you know, their investment. They've worked hard for these homes. A lot of times, you know, they have one or two homes, that's it. And they, they take pride in them, they maintain them. They should have a right to get bad tenants out, especially those that damage their property. So in general, I am very much opposed to rent control, you know, limiting the rent that can be charged, although I do support tenant rights in other regards. So that's, that's pretty much where I stand on rent control.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to question three, and Frank, this is for you. What are your thoughts on the controversial new short-term rental property regulations limiting people to operating a single short-term rental and capping the number of short-term rentals allowed?
I'm generally opposed to that for the same reason. I don't think that it increases the housing supply. And I'm adamantly opposed to it in the coastal zone because it's contrary to the basic tenants of the Coastal Act, which is to provide visitor serving. And so we need to have short-term rentals for visitor serving in the coastal zone. And also, it does not increase the long-term housing supply. If you look at the coastal zone, if we're worried about issues like sea level rise, you know, and, you know, bluff crumbling and the loss of beaches, it doesn't make sense to convert those homes into long-term homes because we, if they are long-term homes, we're going to lose housing. If they're just short-term rentals, we're not going to lose long-term rentals. Plus, again, I think it's, again, a property rights issue. I think we need to be very careful when we start encroaching on property rights. And so in general, I'm opposed to short-term rental caps. And I'm more for the property owner deciding who they want to rent to, how they want to rent their property, and let local governments decide how to regulate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
So if you've been following the Board of Supervisors, you know that I'm in favor of short-term rental regulation and have worked over the last 20 months trying to develop good regulations. I think we did hit a sweet spot with our capping villages in West Marin to limit the number of short-term rentals. And this is primarily, if you look up and down the state, all the coastal communities are dealing with this issue. Palm Springs just had a wonderful article about the impacts of short-term rentals on real estate prices. There's no doubt that short-term rentals have unintended consequences. I would also mention that short-term rentals are not really in the residential zoning code because they weren't really thought of when those codes were developed. So this is really a privilege for property owners to be able to operate a short-term rental. Thus wise, I think it's okay for us to regulate and actually require licenses to make sure there's health and safety requirements, to make sure septic system work, and to make sure that we don't have so many short-term rentals in a small community that no one lives there anymore. We don't have any workers, we don't have any firemen or any teachers that are able to live in the community and services go away because we can't provide workers. So it's really a balancing act. I think we really struck a balance with short-term rental regulations. They'll hopefully go into, into effect in about 90 days. And then we'll monitor them for two years to see if we made the right decisions and adjust accordingly after that.
Thank you. All right, next question. We'll start with Frank this time. Behavioral health is receiving heightened community retention, and more individuals are seeking behavioral health services and support. What would you recommend to address this need?
Well, that's a new term to me. If you're talking about some of the bad behavior that you see in public, I think we need to stop tolerating some of that. If it's related to the, you know, the homeless issue, which is really kind of a drug abuse and alcohol abuse issue. These people are, you know, they're homeless for a reason, many of them by choice. I think that we, those people, we need to force treatment upon them. So again, I'm not quite sure what you mean by the issue. I'm not familiar with that particular term and how it segregates from other behavioral issues that affect our, our communities. So I'm going to pass on the rest of that answer.
Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Health and Human Services is the largest department in the county with a huge $280 million budget. So I'm not sure we need to add to that budget, but we certainly need to make those services more efficient. But what we're seeing coming out of COVID is that mental health needs are really increasing. And these are from our children, to our, to our grandparents, to our older community. Everyone has been affected with COVID and those changes during COVID. And so we're seeing a tremendous demand for mental health services, including those that are homeless and on the street. A lot of those other services are really important, too. Those that get food on the table of low-income people, those that provide health and medical attention for low-income people. Because if you think about Marin, the people in our community that are doing the low-end work and are low-income are the people that we need to support with these social service programs to make sure that they are able to maintain, be resilient in Marin and continue to provide services to Marin while we provide services to them. So it's really, really important that Health and Human Services become as efficient as possible and making sure that those services get to the clients that need them. And I'm one of the board members that's in big favor of bringing those services to people where they're at, including expanding services in rural communities like West Marin and Marin City that don't have direct services currently today and have someone in those communities providing those services.
Thank you. All right, the next question, and Dennis, we'll start with you. The fentanyl crisis in Marin demands urgent action in county-wide strategies. What further actions would you recommend to raise awareness, provide prevention programs, and increase access to Narcan, that being the drug that can reverse an opioid overdose, and remove the barriers to treatment?
Yeah, big concern in Marin, the fentanyl crisis. We recognize that. We've continued with our education programs, really to reach, reach our teenagers early on so they understand the risks associated with fentanyl. But we need to do more than that. We need to collaborate with the region and make sure all our health departments are working together on this issue, that there have common messages and common solutions. And I'm very much in favor of having Narcan available. Everyone should carry it. I carry it with me in case I come across someone that could use that. And I think it's important that we have that available. And the county has supported that with our clinics, having vending machines that give it out for free. And I know at all our health clinics across the county, when we have health days, they give it out for free. But it is important that that become available. But the biggest part of it is we need to educate our children about fentanyl, what it, what it can and can't do, and really make them aware of the risk that they have in their everyday lives. And that's the most important thing. It's through education and a regional approach. I think we can certainly provide some assistance to this problem.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes, well, one thing that, you know, treatment is, and education is fine, but the source of the fentanyl is our wide-open southern border. We need to speak out against that at both the state level and the federal level. We need to ask them to do their jobs. We need to close that border and stop that pipeline from coming into the US and killing people, upwards of 100,000 people a year. The, I'm all in favor of having Narcan distributed to all our, you know, emergency services personnel, anybody that wants to carry it, no problem with that. But we've got to do more to enforce the law against that. Start putting these people that sell that product in jail. We have problems with that on Benford Road. And these drug dealers, they get arrested and they get out and they're back out again. We've got to stop that. We have to throw the book at them, throw them in jail and make sure they don't get out and increase penalties for peddling that disastrous drug. And so, but right now, we need to put some attention on the border, to close the border, get control of the border, so we aren't bringing these drugs in in sufficient quantities to kill millions of Americans. And so enough said on that issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with Dennis for this next question. As two grand jury reports have stated, the increasing tide of seniors in Marin is about to overwhelm available support services, including the provider and the caregiving communities. How would you manage this situation before it becomes a bigger crisis?
Yeah. Marin is aging and will continue to age for the next 20 years or so. And our older population soon will be one of the largest groups that need services throughout Marin. You know, I think that Health and Human Services have made some changes regarding aging services in Marin, and they're starting to bring leadership from aging to their executive meetings, which is good, so those conversations can take place. There was recently a study put together with several recommendations to improve aging services. And the county is taking a deep dive into those recommendations. We also have set aside, I believe it's $250,000 from a budget two years ago to actually dress, direct some of these needs in the aging services. I depend on our Aging Commission and my two appointees to that commission, which who I meet with quarterly, if not more often, to get advice on what the commission is doing and what the needs are. There's a lot of people in Marin who are in need of assistance, but they may own a home even. They may be land-rich, but they're cash poor and they have a hard time meeting the food, their food demands, meeting their maintenance on their house. And we have to remember that, that Marin is, has a lot of seniors who need help, need, need programs to help them survive and remain in Marin. I'm a big fan of senior housing, which is safe for seniors to move into. And the good side of that will be it produces supply out for other people to have housing.
Thank you. All right, next question, and we'll start with you on this one, Frank. How would you assess the state of Marin?
How do I get to answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Well, largely what Dennis said, we have, Marin County has the highest average age of any county in California. And then part of that is due to young people can't afford to stay here. They can't, there aren't good jobs, or high-paying jobs. We tend to chase them away like the George Lucas's Skywalker Ranch. We ran them out into San Francisco and now the presidio benefits from all those jobs. So we've got to turn that tide around so we can get the average age of Marin down. We've got to make it Marin County more affordable. We've got to have good jobs, for high-paying jobs for people to work on. That said, we have an existing problem right now. And I too am in favor of having assisted living centers in Marin County. We could have a few more. And so maybe some program to make it so seniors can sell their homes so they can, to young people that need them. And, you know, maybe with, where I grew up, a land contract was a very popular way to transfer ownership over time. Maybe look at that and, you know, try to get young people to come and move back into the county and start families here. With that said, you know, I yield my time.
Thank you. All right, so next question. How would you assess the state of Marin's infrastructure? And how might we better ensure adequate infrastructure for future needs? And Francis, you are first on that one.
Well, some of the roads used to be great out here. They're not so great now. A lot of bridges need to have some repairs done to them or outright replacement, especially some of the old county bridges. I'd like to see more activity by the Public Works Department seeking grants from the Caltrans and the federal government to rehabilitate and upgrade some of these bridges. The, that's very competitive. They've got to compete against the other big counties like Los Angeles and Sonoma County. But I don't think we're getting our fair share of all of those funds that are available. The, we need, I think we need to have more roads. I think we're never going to solve the traffic problem in Marin County until we have an alternative north-south route, something besides Highway 101. And that's a very challenging problem. I know the, the smart train system won't, won't help in that regard because of the fixed system. I'm all in favor of a smaller bus service that's more flexible. You can alter the routes of these budgets to meet the demands of people that need the service. So I'm in favor of smaller bus services, flexible buses, services over fixed rail. I do think we need to have some more roads in Marin County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Do we have over $200 million in deferred maintenance in our public buildings in Marin County? And we really need to step up and start addressing that. We've done that in the past by savings, by putting, putting money aside in our budget every year. But that's never going to catch up to that, that huge amount of deferred maintenance that we have. For example, the recent big project we did was the Civic Center roof. That was a $20 million project, which we, which we saved through multiple budgets to be able to do that and do it out of the county budget. But I don't think long-term we can meet all the needs of our libraries, fire stations, and the Marin Center, including the Civic Center campus, unless we look for a bond measure in the future, something that we could go out and get two or $400 million to do this work and then also use a bond to do it. Marin has an excellent credit rating. When interest rates come down at some point in the near future, I think we should be looking at that and make a huge investment in infrastructure because we can't provide the services that our community demands unless we have the buildings and the facilities to do that, that including upgrade of things like IT, air conditioning, you name it. Safe, safe buildings, accessible buildings for our residents to receive services. Thank you.
Okay, next question. Francis, we'll start with you. What, in your opinion, is needed to accommodate the needs of Marin's immigrant communities more effectively?
Well, I, I think we're fairly welcoming already. We've got, especially with the Hispanic community, they're really well embedded in this community already. If you're, you know, so the, I think we just have to start treating them like Americans. We have to, I'm all for colorblindness. I'm not for affirmative action or DEI, things like that. I think every, we need to treat everyone like an individual. I think that some of the immigrant communities that I see, they're admirable in many ways. They have very strong family values. They're, they're very religious. I see them in the park behind my house all the time. And, you know, I wish Americans were more like them in some regards. They have big, multi-generational families that stick together. Americans don't do that. We tend to, you know, make our parents live by their own so we can run off and live on our own. So the, I, I think if they need help getting jobs, we can help them do that. But it shouldn't be directed at just immigrants. It should be directed at all of our residents in Marin County. So enough said.
Thank you, Frank. Dennis?
Yeah, thank you. So just to remind everyone, 31% of my district, District Four, recognize and identify as Hispanic. And many of that population is our workforce, and many of them are low-income. So it's important that the county, through its Health and, and Health and Human Services, through its other programs, make sure that they recognize that population to make sure they have the types of things they need for their families, their children. And that includes food and healthcare and access to county services. And I think we do a good job making sure they have that, access to those services, but we certainly can do better. I also think we need to focus on workforce education and training with this group because they are our labor source of the future. because they are our labor source of the future and we need to enable them to get better jobs, enable them to earn a higher income so they can afford to stay in Marin and not have to shift out of Marin to a different county where we probably lose them as a labor source. So I think it's really important we pay attention to that community. Um, I have the canal in my district and I have West Marin in my district and that's where most of the Hispanic population is. And, um, they need to have a, a pathway forward to become middle class in Marin. And I think that's the county's responsibility to help them do that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next question. Uh, please provide your understanding of ongoing efforts to protect and enhance Marin's watersheds. What in your opinions are the most pressing watershed related issues? And how might you help to address those issues? And we'll start with Dennis on that one.
Sure. I think Marin has a huge watershed. Marin, Marin water in particular has a huge watershed. North Marin Water District has a much smaller watershed, but all these watersheds need to be protected environmentally so that we make sure we keep the water as pure as possible. Um, that's really the answer. And that means that sometimes we may not, we may have to limit some access. We have to limit some kinds of erosion around these watersheds to make sure we keep our water as pure as possible and make sure it's delivered to our customers in a pure form. So I think that's the challenge for all of us. And we have a lot of property in Marin that is open space and, and being managed by different parties. I think the One Tam Initiative is a great collaborative effort to bring all those landowners together to have a common goal and common purpose. But I think paying attention to our water in Marin is so vital uh, because it is our life source and it really is inexpensive. When you think about it, a glass of water is really inexpensive compared to anything else that you buy or, or, or get in, in the grocery store. And so we need to respect it as a, as a valuable resource and make sure that we have the resources to protect the watershed that produces that water, collects that water. Thank you.
Thank you. Francis?
Um, yes, it's generally, uh, uh, an issue of keeping agricultural runoff from getting into our reservoirs. And I think we need to do that without placing undue restrictions on our, our dairy and beef cattle ranchers. Um, it, it can be done. You can intercept those flows before that gets into their reservoirs. Um, but I would also like to keep them open to open space. It's just if people can get out and see uh, the beauty of West Marin and especially around our reservoir areas, they can see how important it is and how important it is to maintain um, those watersheds. And, uh, so I'm, I'm, I'm for opening them up. Um, but trying to do more to protect them from agricultural runoff. Um, so I mean, that's one of the most significant pollutants for the Stafford Lake. We've got, we do get some of our water in Marin County from the, the water system there, especially in the summertime. Uh, most of it comes from the Russian River, but, uh, we do need, we, we, we can do a little bit more to protect our reservoirs from surface running. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next question. Uh, an area closely related to water is fire. How well do you think the county is prepared to prevent or fight fires? Do you have any suggestions on a ways to improve our fighting firefighting capabilities? And I'm going to start with you, Dennis.
Sure. Thank you for the question. Um, so, uh, I was an early supporter and sponsor of Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, which is a JPA that covers most of County of Marin. And it really is focused on, uh, making sure we're prepared for the next wildfire by home hardening, vegetation management, uh, and studying evacuations and providing alert Marin site services so people can get early warnings. Um, that's really the approach that seems to work well throughout the U.S. We're way ahead of the game when it comes to the types of things we're doing in Marin because of the measure that we passed in 2020. And now that program, we're into our fourth work plan with that JPA, including doing the Ross Valley shaded fuel break, the Navado shaded fuel break, the East Santa Fe shaded fuel break, and then some fuel breaks in West Marin. And what these really do is give the firefighters a chance to, to stop or, or, or limit the spread of wildfire and gives residents around the urban wildland interface an opportunity to evacuate or get out should a fire be approaching. Um, we, we can't always count on our fire, our, our firefighters being able to put out a wildfire because those extreme days, sometimes you can't even predict where a firefighter, firefighter, may end up or where it may go. So they're, they're in charge of some really difficult things.
Frank?
Um, yes, I, I think the, I mean, there's two types of, of, of places we need to look at residential. We've got to have some of, you know, maintaining the, a, a fire safe area for residences. But we have a lot of open space in Marin County that needs to have brush clearing. And, uh, you know, some of it's done, but more could be done, especially in the Mount Tam watershed. I mean, that would be an inferno if that ever took off. That, that's, that's a big problem. Um, and I would be in favor of, of putting up water tanks uh, to help, uh, in strategic locations to help fight fires, uh, in case that it's needed. Um, so, and, and as far as having, uh, uh, people evacuate, um, safe areas where they can run to, to, uh, you know, escape a wildfire, I think would be uh, helpful, like a big, a, a large open clearing that they could get to. Um, and that requires, you know, just educating people of what's available, uh, and for them to escape a fire should the need arise. And we do have some very narrow roads in, uh, Marin County. And, uh, you know, those are going to be impediments to, uh, safe, safely escaping a fire. And those need to be addressed. But, uh, you know, in general, we've got to clear the fuel load from the forests in the, uh, open spaces in this community, particularly the Mount Tam, uh, uh, area. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next question. We've been hearing about the runoff pollutants from the farming industry in West Marin, i.e. the fertilizer, the feces and the pesticides. What should be done to mitigate these pollutants? And Frank, I'm going to start with you on that one.
Okay. I think, uh, onsite collection, either with something comparable to a French drain, uh, to intercept that surface runoff before it gets into our streams and rivers. Um, I think that's a, that would be a significant expense, um, that the county, I think, should participate in helping the, the ranchers and farmers um, and do that, um, because it, you know, it's going to benefit, uh, uh, the county overall. Um, Marin County is an ideal place for beef and dairy cattle. It's great weather. It's got great grasslands. Just a natural place for, uh, ranchers to raise beef and dairy cattle. And we're losing, uh, dairy ranches. They can't, they can't compete. Um, I, I think that a large part of that is due to the environmental constraints that are placed upon them. And there, there are two burdens and, and the, the county can do more to help out with that. Uh, now they, they do have programs where they fence off cattle from uh, uh, streams and creeks. That's good, but they need to help them intercept the runoff before it gets into our reservoirs. So I would look into uh, developing a program to help the beef and dairy cattle ranchers do that. Thank you.
Dennis?
Yep. Uh, water quality controls on our dairies in particular have been in place for a long, long time, probably since the eighties or even earlier. Um, they've becoming more, they've become more and more strict, which puts additional, additional, um, pressure on our dairy industry. Um, in particular, the Point Reyes National Seashore, I think is what, where the question referenced, or at least that's what I think it referenced. And there's particularly a, a bunch of, um, certainly a lot being scrutinized there with the general management plan update, the elk fence and the elk, and a, a bunch of other things that are going on there. But the dairies really are under economic pressure. Um, because organic dairy doesn't pay as well as it used to pay, uh, with everyone going into the organic business, organic dairy business. And also large organic dairies being developed in the Central Valley that put extreme pressure on our local dairies. So really finding a niche for those dairies is really the way for them to survive. And then that will enable them, if they can get longer leases and, and get, uh, make, make better, make better money out of the product they're selling by having a niche can afford to do some of the improvements that are needed on, on these dairy farms. Outside of the park, uh, Resource Conservation District has done a lot of good work, fencing off ravines and protecting waterways to keep cattle out. And that's been very, very good and very efficient to help the, uh, beef, beef ranchers in particular. So hopefully that'll continue.
Thank you. Well, that's a good segue actually into our next question here. Uh, are you in favor of giving ranches in Point Reyes National Seashore a 20-year lease? And if so, what conditions would you include in that leash? And I'm going to start with you on that one, Frank.
Uh, sure. I'm, I'm all in favor extending, uh, leases for dairy farmers on Point Reyes. Again, it's a, a perfect climate, uh, to raise cows, big, large animals like cooler weather. And, uh, so they, they thrive in areas like the, the Point Reyes National Seashore. I, I'm all in favor of keeping land productive, um, whether it's through farmer, uh, farming or, uh, uh, raising cattle. I think that's, we need to utilize those resources. So, uh, I'm in favor of maintaining that. I was very disappointed in seeing the Lunny Oyster Farm closed. Again, this was something that was aquaculture, has a very high, uh, priority in the coastal act of yet, um, um, Steve's predecessor on the Board of Supervisors, while he was the chairman of the, the Coastal Commission, they turned that down. I think that was a, a really big mistake to force them to close. Um, they'll say, yeah, it was all, um, um, you know, determined by the, uh, Department of Interior, but we didn't put up a fight at all to try to save that farm. I want to avoid that with the dairy cattle and the beef cattle in the rest of, uh, West Marin. Thank you.
So the, the County of Marin has, uh, fought alongside the dairy and beef ranchers in Point Reyes National Seashore to encourage the federal government to give them 20-year leases. Uh, Secretary Salazar came out when he announced the Lunny, uh, Oyster Farm was closing, Drake Bay Oyster Farm was closing. And he guaranteed 20-year leases. Um, they've gone through that process and they developed a general management plan with 20-year leases. Um, and many of the ranchers and farmers and dairymen are just learning about what those requirements will be. They have very strong environmental requirements that are part of that ranching and 20-year management plan agreement. And the Park Service has a huge, um, responsibility to make sure they're able to manage those 20-year leases. Um, they're currently in mediation because there was a lawsuit over that 20 management plan. And I understand negotiations are continuing to try and work out a settlement. The county and I have always been in favor of the 20-year leases, uh, on the Point Reyes National Seashore.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to change gears a little bit and talk about climate change. Uh, the 2022-23 Marin Grand Jury found that climate change, heat waves, atmospheric rivers, EVs and electrification are straining our electrical grid. This has led to brownouts, blackouts and the loss of cell phone and internet service. What steps do you recommend to significantly reduce such events? And Dennis, we'll start with you.
Yeah. Climate change and sea level rise are probably some of the biggest challenges that counties and cities will, will face in the next decade or two or longer. Um, you know, we identified the most vulnerable infrastructure and, and now we're working on implementation plans to address some of that through adaptation and/or mitigation. Um, the grand jury was pretty specific though, that, um, with, with the planned electrification, we're going to struggle with electrical supply. Um, that's where we need to work with PG&E. We need to work with MCE, the local electrical provider, to make sure that we build solar farms, um, and other things like that to provide ample green energy for that demand. Um, there's a couple of projects off the coast that I just was talking to, to one of the other representatives today about the, uh, wind, wind farms off the Humboldt Bay coast that are being planned. Um, Congressman Huffman just got a half billion dollar grant, I think, for the, for the port up there to start planning for that. So, um, the electrical suppliers, energy providers are looking at many, many options to meet this demand. And I think they will be able to by the time we get to the full electrification that we're planning.
Thank you. Frank?
Yeah, I don't think that, uh, we're ready for full electrification right now. I think it was a big mistake for Marin County um, to make it so you couldn't use gas appliances in new homes or major, uh, retrofits of homes. Um, it's a, it's a cheap, reliable and efficient source of energy. It will continue to be, uh, of that for a long, long time. It'll be a long time before wind and solar ever, uh, can achieve the abundance and, and the performance of, 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 of fossil fuels. Um, I think it's foolish to try to stop global warming. I think we need to do more to adapt to global warming. And that includes things like a planned retreat from the coast of, to, but I also think we have plenty of time. I don't believe that, in fact, I know that, uh, climate change is not catastrophic. It's going to continue at pretty much the same pace that it has been for the past 150 years. We aren't seeing accelerated sea level rise. We aren't seeing, uh, more tornadoes and, and hurricanes. Uh, we are, you know, we're, we're seeing a, a steady change in the climate. That's something that it does all the time. So I'm more in favor of adapting the climate change and maintaining our fossil fuels because that keeps our standard of living very, very high. I would rather concentrate on decreasing the pollution from those fossil fuels. Um, that is achievable. Thank you.
All right. Last question for the evening. Marin's growing traffic congestion is created both by county residents and people commuting into our county. What are your suggestions for improvement of this traffic problem? And Dennis, we will start with you.
Sure. I think the answer is twofold. We need to make sure we provide more workforce housing for people so they can actually live and work in Marin. And I think that's what the housing element tries to do. Secondarily, we really need to improve and reinvent our public transportation system. Coming out of COVID, our public transportation system has taken a heavy hit. Marin Transit has done better than other transit agencies, but Golden Gate Bridge District is still at like 50% of what it was pre-COVID for commuters. Um, so a lot has changed. So, but we need to reinvent our public transportation system and make sure that we encourage people and give incentives to people to use public transportation. Um, I think that's going to take, um, a stretch and it's going to take some creative ideas. But I for one am really in favor of just free transit for anyone that rides on our buses, our public transportation system. I think that's a great way to encourage people to take advantage of it. And then also to the same time, recognize that our transportation services is so important for those people that are transit dependent, like my canal neighborhood. Um, the people, residents in the canal are transit dependent. And having that service on a regular basis is so important for them to get to and from work, to get to and from college in Marin or some course that they may be taking. And we have to just remember that, um, you know, transit dependent people are really dependent on public transportation. But we need to rebuild that and rethink that whole pu- public transportation system.
Okay. Thank you. Frank?
So thank you. I think another problem with transportation in this county is we have a lot of people from Sonoma County that pass through Marin County to get to San Francisco to, to jobs there. We have a similar problem here. A lot of, of high paying jobs for Marinites. They're not in Marin County. They're in San Francisco. So to try to be, bring industry, high paying industry here in the county, I think is a a worthy goal to eventually help, uh, the problem with, uh, transportation in Marin County. I also believe that we need to have, I mentioned it before, uh, smaller buses going into small, you know, neighborhoods with narrower streets with a more flexible service. And make sure the buses run on time. If you want to have incentives for people to ride, uh, the, the public transit system, you've got to make it reliable. Uh, the worst thing that can happen is if the, the buses run late or the trains run late and makes it less reliable. We also have to do something to, uh, reduce the change in modes. The more often you change from say, uh, a, a bus to a ferry system or from a train to a, a bus system, uh, that slows people down. That decreases ridership as well. So we're looking at, uh, reducing mode changes. And I still believe that people like to drive. Uh, we need to find some way to have an, uh, an, an alternative north-south route in Marin County. I think that would alleviate a lot of traffic. Um, so I think that's pretty much my stance on, of, of transit in Marin County.
Well, thank you, candidates. Um, that concludes the question portion of our forum this evening. But before you make your closing statements, I'd like to share some key election information. So if I could have the first slide, please. Okay. So we have some key dates here on more days and more ways to vote. On February 5th, the ballots will be mailed out to our voters. On February 6th, the official ballot drop boxes will be available. On February 24th, some of our vote centers will be open 11 days before Election Day. And on March 2nd, all our vote centers will be open, which is four days before Election Day. March 5th is Election Day and it's the last day to vote. All vote centers are open until 8:00 PM and mailed ballots must be postmarked by this date. And ballot boxes will be available until 8:00 PM. And what's also very important to remember as you, uh, sign your ballot, you need to sign your ballot when you drop it off. Um, because if you don't sign it, it will not be accepted by our, uh, Department of Elections. So, um, next slide, please. And this is the Spanish language versions for our Spanish viewers to take a look at. And this is the Spanish-language versions for our Spanish viewers to take a look at. Okay, so there are many online resources for election information, including the League's website at MarinLWV.org. Another very helpful League of Women Voters resource is Vote 411, which is an online tool that provides information about what's on your ballot. Candidates are invited to enter their information where voters can get a personalized list of candidates, including their biographies and top priorities, and information about local ballot measures and more, both in English and Spanish. Vote 11 replaces Voter's Edge. So please visit Vote11.org. You'll see this slide at the end of the form so you can take a photo or make notes. Thank you. You can remove that slide. All right. And now our candidates will make a closing statement of two minutes each. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, so we will start with Dennis.
Yeah, thanks again, and thank you to Sue for moderating this, and thank you to the Spanish translators. Since my election in 2016, I have focused on the environment, emergency preparedness, and community housing. I have listened to your concerns, and if reelected, will continue to hold office hours throughout the district to ensure all constituents can be heard. My work is continuing with fellow supervisors to create an emergency preparedness plan with better emergency communications, effective emergency planning, efficient notifications, and improved neighborhood preparedness. Workforce housing is a serious issue in Marin. The adoption of the housing element is a step in the right direction. The enactment of a new county-wide rental protections will be helpful, and easing the permit process, especially for accessory dwelling units, and the protection of existing affordable housing, continue to be my and the Board of Supervisors' priority. I led the successful effort establishing the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, funding wildfire mitigation work, vegetation management, home hardening, and making sure that we're prepared for the next major fire threat. Still defending Marin County's environment, including its rich agricultural lands, is a priority of mine. I've continued to support affordable preschool, childcare, and older adult programs in our immigrant residents. I'd announced earlier that some of my endorsements, early endorsements, were the Sierra Club, North Bay Labor Council, Planned Parenthood, and Marin Professional Firefighters Local. I'm also endorsed by the Marin IJ, California and Marin Democrats, Marin Young Democrats, MAP, SEIU 2015, recommended by the Marin Women's PAC, and all my colleagues on the Board of Supervisors and many council members from my district. With your support, I will continue to be your advocate.
Thank you. Frank?
Yes, my big issues remain the homeless issue, the housing, to make it more affordable for our young to live here and for our retirees to stay here. And I'm also a big advocate of election integrity and with a focus on Marin County. We do have some problems with our elections, but I'm not blaming the election staff at all. But there are some anomalies that need to be adequately addressed. I would like to speak to Dennis anytime about those privately if we can. And, you know, I encourage everyone, voting is very important. You've got to get out and vote. And it also helps if you observe the ballot processing. Go to the Civic Center after Election Day and watch what they do. Watch how they process these ballots. Get yourself educated on that system. It's very interesting, to say the least. Anyway, I am all for increasing the housing supply here in Marin County. I think that's essential, but not with the big back box housing projects that are being forced upon us by Sacramento. I'm all for local control, for protecting our agricultural industry in West Marin. I think it's an ideal place for the agriculture we have now. I want to maintain that. I want to maintain our open space, and I want to protect our watersheds. And I would like to increase our water supply here in Marin County by raising reservoirs, but not, no desalinization plants. I think that's a horrible idea. I know that's been discussed. That's the last thing that we should consider here in Marin County. And so vote for me on March 5th, and you won't be disappointed. Thank you very much. Oh, I would like to say I'm supported by the American Independent Party and the California Republican Assembly, as well as, of course, my own committee, the Marin Election Integrity Committee. Thank you.
Well, thank you to our candidates for participating this evening, and thank you to the League Forum team. And a special thanks to our partners at Community Media Center of Marin. As I said earlier, a video of tonight's forum will be posted on the League's website in the next couple of days. Thank you all for joining us this evening, whether you're here on Zoom or on Channel 30. And most important, thank you for voting. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks, Sue.